These two iterations of the stool. I'm sort of like, oh, okay, they finally got this issue together.
Right? Yeah, I didn't even know it existed and I pass it all the time. I've seen it there, but I didn't know, I didn't know what their mission condition values were or anything.
I didn't, I didn't realize it was a special needs place.
It's definitely a special needs, yeah. There's a, there's special needs, uh, curriculum. People seem to be pretty on point.
Well, that's nice.
Pledge allegiance to the flag. Jean, would you like to plead it?
Of course.
All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, Sarah, please call the roll.
Commissioner DiMartini?
Here.
Commissioner Kelly?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Here.
Commissioner DePillo?
Here.
Chairman Oderko?
Here. Okay, welcome to everyone here in the audience. Uh, there is an agenda at the front desk in the lobby if you are wanting to follow the meeting. At this time, we are going to take public comment for items not on the agenda. This is an opportunity for anyone in the public to comment on items that are not on the agenda. If you're here to make comments for something that is on the agenda, we'll get to that, uh, soon. Everyone is allotted three minutes time. If you'd like to come up, please do. Please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Patty Nifer. Looks like this is on already, great. Um, I, uh, am a Penrin resident and I just wanted to make, I've had the opportunity to speak, um, to your planning director, um, on a previous occasion, but I've never had a chance to speak to the planning commissioners before. Um, I wanted to, um, make you aware that there are local community groups, um, Placer Citizens for Neighborhood Rights, uh, Preserve Penrin, quite a few others, hundreds of people that are very, very concerned with the high-density rezoning that's going on. And obviously, it's going to affect Loomis. So the project that's on the top of our mind right now are the 140 units that are going into a, a high-density apartment complex with 12 towers and right in, uh, between, on the border basically of, of Loomis and, and Penrin, um, on, uh, Penrin Road by 76 Station. So it's going through the approval process and the community groups have reached out in a large variety of ways to try and get some mitigations going on with that project. I mean, we've contacted and spoken in person with our, our assemblyman, Joe Patterson, Kevin Kylie, our Senator, Roger Nilo, the HUD, HUD, and also the, uh, planning commissioners and the Board of Supervisors in Placer County, because there are so many things that are going on that wouldn't be going on with a regular 400, uh, a regular apartment complex. Um, the, the one that I'm really here to reach out to with is the traffic. There was a traffic study done and we have, we have some engineers, you know, among our citizens and we have some people that are very familiar with studies. And we went through the traffic study with a fine tooth, tooth comb. And it is absolutely inadequate. It, um, says that there are, out of 240 apartments, up to four-bedroom apartments, there are going to be 80 cars, 80 cars during rush hour traffic. Does that mean that nobody goes anywhere? The study was done not when school was in, 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 you know, session and it showed, um, that there wouldn't be any, any big effects. Most of the people are going to be shopping in Loomis. There's, that's the closest place. They're going to be driving right from, you know, Penrin, from the intersection right to Loomis. I think that in some way, you need to request a more robust traffic study. There are going to be no lights, there's going to be no traffic signal. People are going to be coming out of the apartment complex right onto Taylor, right into Loomis. And there are a lot more things happening. I know my time is up, but I'm completely available. We have-
Thank you, Patty. Appreciate it. Okay, thank you. Okay, anyone else in the audience tonight? Uh, anyone on Zoom? Okay. Okay, Sherry? You're up.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Welcome.
Oh, good, thank you for taking my comment. I'm not sure if this is appropriate at this meeting or another Loomis meeting. I'm a Loomis resident and I live off of King and Bankhead Road. And I'd like to see a traffic study done on King. Since the stop sign was put in, um, we get tremendous traffic noise and it's people going, um, towards Sierra College specifically. Um, and they just floor it, they punch it because the speed limit sign goes way up. Um, I'd like to see all of King posted at 30 miles per hour. It is residential and we have children on scooters and skateboards and bicycles up and down King and it's an absolute highway. And, um, if 30 miles an hour, can't do it, I mean, drop it to 25. It's, it's a huge problem. It's the noise just from the stop sign being put in is people just punch it and go towards Sierra College. They, they must hit 65 miles an hour. It's crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. Eva, take it away.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hey, hey. My name is Eva Marshall. I reside at 3367 Cathy Way. I have two items that I'd like to address regarding conditional use permits. First, I would like someone to explain how and why permits are approved prior to conditions being met. Conditions may need to be agreed upon first, I understand, but logic would dictate that the final permit should not be approved until those conditions have been met. I have personal experience with four permits that affect my property that have yet to meet their conditions as written. The businesses involved have modified their behavior, so I have not had to file any noise complaints in the last year. But I will continue to file complaints should they resume activities in their yards with power tools or exceeding despot levels as we get into warmer months. Um, the second thing I wanted to address is that I have been following the monthly active project planning status reports. And it's come to my attention that three of the permits that I'm, I'm referring to above, um, have been removed from this month's report. And my question is why? The three businesses are Level One Roofing, Madera Framing, High Tech. They were all approved in May 23rd of 2023. However, it says received, approved up until now. These businesses agreed verbally to the conditions and then after consulted with an attorney to address the costs about the fence, because it's a border fence between ILT and residential. Um, and to this day, the setbacks, buffer zones are still not being adhered to. Other than following these reports, I have not heard from the town about the enforcement of these conditions. The fourth business is of course Golden Spikes, which is kind of ancient already, but, and, and they've been behaving. But to my knowledge, only their windows have been insulated and were accepted by the town, while the permit states the walls, the bay doors are included in that insulation condition. And my primary reason for bringing all this up is that I feel that it needs to be brought to your attention. The process and the procedures are flawed and it has caused me extreme frustration. And who knows who else, you know, res- resigning in Loomis that this affects? Um, and how does this affect my property value? What does this say about how the town conducts its business and how does it protect its citizens? Um, I have been here for 28, 25 years, over 25 years. And I have been-
Respond to some of these comments if you don't mind. Um, so we have staff taking, uh, notes here and what we'd like to do is, um, if you would, address some of those in an email maybe to, um, to Eva. Um, well, you know, the, okay, so let's, let's take it one by one. Patty, your, your, uh, comments are, uh, recorded, thank you. Um, I think what you're asking the town to do is, uh, is a function of what the town council could do. Um, so, um, the planning commission is not in a position to make comment necessarily on, on pending projects, but the council is. So, uh, that's something that we can, you can refer to, uh, to council on. Uh, the second, uh, as it relates to traffic and speeding cars, um, that's, that's a town council item as well. Um, so we can, uh, kick that up to council, the comments at least. The comments will be recorded tonight. Um, as far as Eva's comments are concerned around, about CUPs, uh, Christie, could you respond to some of that? I mean, she, she put a lot out there, so, um, what can, what can you respond to?
Right, so the process with a CUP is that a project is evaluated and conditions are developed. And then it is up to the applicant to then follow through with those. It's not a case where you would issue an approval, um, and before, where you would issue conditions that have to be met before you would issue an approval on that particular use. A lot of these things are things that happen afterward, after they have an approval. If they don't have an approval to operate, they can't necessarily achieve some of those conditions. So it's something that comes after. If they're not meeting their conditions, then the town can, you know, confer with them to make sure that the conditions are met. And then if, if anyone in the public had a complaint against it, you know, that, that's certainly something that they could come to the town and, and make a formal complaint.
Okay, so walk us through, um, so on all the CUPs that exist out there, uh, there are conditions of, um, operation, right?
Mm-hmm.
And so if those aren't met, who's monitoring that on behalf of the town?
That was gonna be my question, who burdens that to make sure it's completed within the boundaries that's been requested?
I mean, it's, it's the applicant's duty to complete those conditions. Um, the town can track that, but it's not, you know, say, uh, an operation has been going on for a long time. It's not the ta- the town's necessarily, uh, ability to go out and monitor every single use permit every year and make sure they are still, you know, compliant with their landscaping, for example. So we rely on those, um, complaints to, to then address that.
So is that a code enforcement?
It would be a code enforcement.
Okay, so, so code enforcement would be, so the, the complaint would come into the town and it would be routed theoretically to code enforcement and code enforcement would take it on? Is that, is that the pattern of events typically? Okay, so just to respond to Eva, Eva, if you would, please, um, well, you, we have her, we have her comments here.
Yeah, we can, we can look into that.
Okay, so-
Taking notes.
Okay. All right, anybody else on Zoom, Sarah? Okay, at this time, we're gonna close public comment for items not on the agenda and move on to the adoption of the agenda.
I move to adopt the agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Sarah, please call the roll.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner DiMartini?
Yes.
Commissioner DePillo?
Yes.
Chairman Oderko?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna move on to public comment on the consent agenda. Anyone in the audience wishing to provide comment on the consent agenda? This would be your opportunity to do so. Anyone on Zoom? Okay, we're gonna close public comment on that and bring it back for consideration. Okay, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda.
Want a motion? I move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second. Okay, motion and a second. Sarah, please call the roll.
Commissioner Wilson?
Yes.
Commissioner DePillo?
Yes.
Commissioner DiMartini?
Yes.
Commissioner Kelly?
Yes.
Chairman Oderko?
Yes. Okay, we're gonna move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting tonight. Item number three, Sierra Foothall, Foothills Academy Conditional Use Permit Modification and Design Review Application. Christie?
Yes.
Okay, take it away.
So we have a little PowerPoint, um, to go through. We're starting on the last page. And we have to go back to the first. There we go. So, uh, we have an application, um, from Sierra Foothills Academy. It's project number 2303. And the application is for use permit modification and design review. So just to give you some background on this project, Sierra Foothills Academy is an, an existing private school operating under the 2009 conditional use permit issued to Sierra Christian Academy. Uh, Sierra Christian Academy operated a K through eighth school and the use permit allowed for up to 160 students and a staff of about eight to 12. Sierra Foothills Academy serves special needs students, unlike Sierra Christian Academy, and has a student-to-teacher ratio of about two to one. So there's a much larger number of staff, uh, serving the student population. When Sierra Foothills Academy replaced Sierra Christian Academy, no changes to the use permit were made at that time and they were allowed to operate under that, uh, existing use permit. Um, some current issues, um, that are occurring. Uh, Sierra Christian Academy was only required to provide 30 parking stalls due to the number of staff, which would be up to 12. And then, um, the school parking requirements for a K to eighth school were one stall needed for every eight to 10 students. So it was a, a little bit different on the staffing level, which, um, makes, makes a difference. So there are currently not enough parking stalls to accommodate the higher staffing levels of Sierra Foothills Academy and that results in vehicles parked along the roadways adjacent to the school, particularly King Road. So since Sierra Foothills Academy serves special needs students, there's also a greater need for extra space to assist those students experiencing a stress and needing an area where they can, um, they can work together with a, a assigned staff member, their teacher, to help that student calm themselves down and receive treatment. Uh, due to a lack of space, students are brought outside often to avoid a classroom disruption, um, but that can lead to outbursts or noise that have the potential to affect, um, others in the area. So the school is proposing two phases. Uh, phase one has, uh, one modular restroom, uh, which would be about 480 square feet. Uh, it would include separate men's and women's facilities, each with at least one accessible stall and sink and then either two toilet stalls or a stall and urinal. And then there would have, uh, excuse me, two modular classrooms and each classroom would be 960 square feet each. Uh, one of those classrooms would be used, uh, as a cooldown room. So that's where students can have a quiet space to calm down, compose themselves away from the other students in the class and then return to their regular classroom space when they are, um, able to. The additional classroom space would have capacity for 12 students and six teaching staff. Phase one includes the, uh, a total of 66 parking stalls. So the 30 plus additional, um, and new, new stalls and then some, some of the existing would be lost due to the circulation, uh, pattern change and then, uh, new parking stalls added. So a total of 66 stalls, um, including an emergency vehicle access route. SP, um, South Placer Fire District was consulted on this and so they have reviewed, uh, the, the designs and the access. New landscaping is also proposed. Um, the EVA would remove one, uh, Valley Oak and there, the project also proposes to remove one hazardous live oak that's leaning significantly over the playground area. Um, the project would also have replacement oaks, so they're proposing seven 15-gallon Valley Oaks, which would more than accommodate the mitigation requirement for tree loss. So here's a, a site layout of that phase one. So you can see the darker colors. The darker gray is the new parking area with the emergency vehicle access. The two classrooms are to the north of that and then you can see the restroom facility, the modular restroom on the backside of the existing building. Um, and then you can also see where the road would be altered and widened to ensure that there's adequate circulation flow and access. And then on the next slide, it provides the, uh, landscaping plan for phase one. So you'll see, um, the trees in green are the oaks and then there's pistachio trees and, um, other landscaping, ground cover. So they would add that at that phase and then we'll get to phase two. So phase two proposes two additional modular, modular units. They would be 1,440 square feet each. Uh, those modular units would be used for two classroom units, an office and a therapy room. And that would serve up to 24 additional students and 12 teaching staff. Under this phase, nine additional parking stalls and landscaping are proposed. And the existing playground that's currently located at the front of the school along King would be relocated to the grassy area closer to Shelter Cove Drive. So while nine parking stalls are only added in that phase two, phase one includes more than enough to cover both phase one and a portion of phase two. And then this shows, um, Sarah, could you go back one? This shows the, um, the parking that would be where the existing playground area is and then the modular units that would be added. And then between all the modular units, there would be, um, ADA accessible walkways and connectivity, um, to go from one portion of the school into another. And then on the next, you can see our, the landscaping under phase two, which includes a few more trees in that new parking lot area. So for the design, uh, the modular units would look the same as the existing modular units on site. There's a couple of modular units there. They're gray with a white trim and these would be the same style. Uh, so they include ramps and ADA accessible pathways. The, um, the, there's also a chain link fence, um, that's existing along King, at the corner of King and Shelter Cove Drive and that would be replaced with an open metal fence that you will see further down on King Road where the main school is located. So it'll, would be a consistent appearance fence-wise. And then for the use permit modification, uh, the modifications address conditions from utility and service providers as well as the proposed site plans and landscaping plans that were submitted. So this use permit modification would limit enrollment to 82 students. The existing conditional use permit limited student population to 160 students. And so the change would also limit staff to 63, whereas it was eight to 12. So for comparison, the modification would allow 145 persons on-site rather than the 172 persons on-site that's currently allowed. Uh, the use permit modifications also address the change to operating hours with students on-site between eight and two. And, uh, the previous school had a before and after-school program and evening events and which Sierra Foothills Academy does not. So, um, it's just updating that to reflect the actual current use. And, um, the modifications also address the total number of parking lot stalls that are needed. Um, so instead of the 30, we're, we're going up to 75 total stalls. And it also provides for gated EVA access to Shelter Cove Drive, which would only be used during emergency situations. It would otherwise remain closed, the gate would be closed. So community benefits. How do we support the fi- findings for the project? Uh, the project provides educational services for special needs students aged five to 22, attending grades K through 12. It addresses an existing part, parking issue by increasing available parking from 30 existing stalls to 75 total stalls. So this, it also improves roadway safety along Shelter Cove Drive and King Road by removing vehicles parked along the roadways. Um, it improves visibility, access and access for bicycles and pedestrians, which is important with Loomis Grammar School right across the street. Um, the project also reduces noise disturbances by providing more indoor space for student assistance and treatment during stressful episodes. Uh, the project overall maintains the design and character of the school with the same architecture and landscaping design as the existing facilities. And then I just want to call to your attention, um, you each have a copy. We received, um, a letter from the principal of Loomis Grammar School supporting the project. And I'll just go ahead and read it. Um, and it says, "To whom it may concern, please accept this letter in support of the Sierra Foothill Academy Modular Expansion Project. As a neighbor and community partner, I have had the pleasure of meeting with members of the SFA team to discuss the planned project. As a lifelong educator, I am excited about the positive impact that the expansion project will have on students and families in and around the Loomis community. In addition to providing classroom upgrades for the growing needs of students, the project will address the limited parking options for staff and visitors who oftentimes are relegated to parking on King Road. Parking expansion will also alleviate overflow on King Road. Facility upgrades will also help to accommodate the growing needs of students with moderate to severe disabilities, giving them the best possible chances to tap into their fullest potential at SFA and beyond. It is with great enthusiasm that I support the endeavors of our neighbors and partners at SFA." And then just for reference, we have a few visuals. So, um, you'll see in the upper left-hand portion of the screen, it's just a schematic of the, um, modular units. Again, it looks the same as, um, the existing units that are on-site. And then to the right-hand side is the, um, design of the, the modular restroom unit. And then on the last page are just a few, um, picture, pictures from Google of, um, the property. So coming down King facing east, um, you can see that chain link fence that would be replaced with a, uh, open metal fence. And then as we move down, you can see the playground up front and then an existing modular unit that's, uh, the gray unit with a white trim. And then in the last, um, picture, you can see the existing, um, parking along, uh, King Road, which this project would, uh, fix that problem. So, um, that concludes the presentation. Do you have any questions?
Okay, let's start with questions down here and we'll move our way this way.
Okay. Uh, good presentation. So I'm looking at Google Maps here too as well. It's a lot easier sometimes. Uh, I guess the only couple of questions that I have, uh, one of them is they're reducing their, their staff from 172 to 142 and what if that-
Oh, no, it's not a reduction in staff.
Or persons on campus.
It's persons on campus. So with the-
What if that, is it, that impact their operations at all? Obviously, the risk versus reward, it seems like it, it's a, it's a risk worth taking.
Right, so they are, they are aware of, you know, how much space these modular classrooms would afford for their student population. And so it's been planned, um, so that they have, this, this is based on that, that need and that capacity. So the, the limits proposed in the conditional use permit are reflective of that.
That makes sense. And then the only other question too, and I'm sure we're gonna get to some more is, uh, we take bike rides around, down King too as well. It's really busy right there. And I know the sheriff's office is not here, but I'm, I'm wondering, um, the intent is if we get those cars off the road, it's still legal to park there. those cars off the road, it's still legal to park there. People can still park there, even though most of those folks will probably be off the road. Is the intent to keep that lane open? I guess to make sure no one's parking there, but we can't, it's not illegal to park there. So all these cars will be off the road, but then that'll just make it open for other vehicles to park there. The intent is to make it safer, right?
Well, the intent is that the school will now have the correct amount of on-site parking that it should have had based on this particular use.
Because a lot of those cars are spillover from people parking there.
Correct, correct.
Okay, that makes sense. So the theory is they're gonna be off the road during the time of this course, right?
Yes, yes.
So it should make it safer coming across there.
It's more convenient for them to park, you know, within their own park, on-site parking.
That makes a lot more sense. Hopefully, that's what happens. And the only last question is, I don't know if there's any in the audience, any complaints or issues from people that live right behind the school? Because as they increase their footprint, is there any issues or problems that...
I have not received a complaint since I've been here.
Perfect. So at this point, that's the only real questions I have. I'll hand it over to Jean. Thank you.
Was there anything about the timing of the phases, or is it basically depended on enrollment and finances and things like that, and they don't really know?
I think the goal is to have Phase One started right away, and then on Phase Two as the need arises.
Okay. And it sounds like they no longer have the after-school program, but there never any evening events either? No?
We're gonna ask the applicant to come up in just a sec. So let's get some questions out here when he comes up.
I was around when we did this originally in the revisions and things, so congratulations on this, that you're doing it. Okay, no more questions.
Thank you so much for, that was a great presentation to help us understand. And my biggest concern when I saw this come before me was the parking. And I think also just the flow of going in and out of the parking lot, the safety of that, you know, if you have more people parked than getting back onto King. I don't think there's a way to keep people from parking on King, because Loomis School's right there too, and parents coming to run in, you know, to get kids and things like that. I don't think they'd put a red, say, no parking there or anything like that. I don't think they would do that.
Negative, there isn't. And that's why I was asking the question, and if they're on, they're just gonna probably be retaken.
Yeah, it's just gonna be taken by other people, I'm afraid. But I'm really excited to have this in our community, to help these special needs kids and, you know, to have a beautiful school to go to and accommodate them and their needs. And it's real special that Loomis would allow this, and I appreciate them coming here and doing that.
Ryan?
And thank you for the presentation. I actually live kind of near there, so I understand the need for the additional parking, because heading out on Sunnol with all the teachers and people parked along the King right there, it's definitely a safety issue for you guys and for students and people walking to Loomis Grammar. So I like the fact that it's expanding and getting the parking and helping alleviate some of those safety concerns.
Okay, so it looks like the access is off of Shelter Cove, right?
No, it's the...
That's the emergency. That's the emergency, they'll have a gate across there.
Okay. And so they enter it through King.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So will there be kind of a turn lane to get into that then, if they're gonna widen it?
It's, that's not part of this project. We're not looking at roadway widening for this project. This is just, you know, maintaining the existing circulation pattern for entry and exit.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, the applicant's here. Would you like to make a comment? There might be some questions for you as we get through this.
Aye, thank you.
Please take a name and...
My name's Hoyt Fong. I'm a consultant for Sierra Foothills Academy. Quick introduction, Patricia Zeeley, the executive director of the school, Chucky Zeeley, associate director.
Welcome.
And we want to thank the town of Loomis, and in particular Christie and Sarah for a long period of getting to this point, so we're quite happy. And we fully agree with all the points that were presented here, and that we will accept and follow through with all conditions.
Okay, great. Jean, you wanna take this opportunity to ask a question or two from the applicant?
I just wanted to ask, you don't have any evening programs, Sarah?
Oh, that, once in a long while, if there's like a parent participation program, back-to-school night.
Special events occasionally, kind of thing.
Right, right. Not on a regular basis.
Right. And I didn't realize that this was a special needs academy, so I was delighted to learn that, because that is such a need for these students to have their needs met. So I was really glad to hear that, and it was nice to have the letter from your neighbor's school.
His great principal.
So I look forward to seeing good things happen there.
Thank you. Okay, anything else from the applicant at this point?
Negative, thank you.
Okay, let's open it up for public comment, for anyone here in the audience. Anyone on Zoom? Okay, Pam? Take it away, Pam, three minutes, please.
Oh, hi. This is just a technical question. I mean, I saw the presentation, but I couldn't see the guy that just got up there and talked. I can't see any of you talking. I mean, I recognize your voice, Tim, and Linda's, and Jean's, but I can't see anybody. Can you, can you correct that right now, so I can see who's... I'm on Zoom. Oh, now I can see the planning commission, but I couldn't, I couldn't see the guy that was just up there talking. Yes. Yeah, it was just a technical question, and I've actually been to the school once. Our therapy dog group did an event there, and of course, the parking was horrendous on the street and trying to cross the street, because it is busy with, my dog was a little scary. So I do appreciate, you know, the more, you know, parking spaces and keeping King Road safer for everybody. So thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Anyone else? Sarah? Okay, thank you. We are gonna close public comment and bring it back to the commission. Any closing comments, questions at this point?
Well, Mr. Fong answered one of my usual at-the-end questions, which was about, are you okay with all the conditions? And you said yes, so thank you.
Okay, I have a few questions, comments. Christie, we sent a notification out to everyone within, what, a 500-foot radius? Is that how that...
300 feet.
300, okay.
And it's noticed in the newspaper.
And it's noticed in the newspaper, okay, got it. Check that box. Well, what I like particularly about this project are multiple things. It is busy on King, and I think that, you know, if we can, you know, if your project can absorb more parking spots on-site, that's gonna be helpful. And it really is the only business around there that would be parking on King. You know, all the, the school, they park on-site also. They have adequate parking on-site, so this will be a big relief to King Road, and so that's excellent. You know, you guys have a great reputation in the community, just not outside, just not within the town of Loomis, but regionally. It really is an important type of business that you guys, that you guys provide. And so, you know, expanding services is, you know, I'm very happy that you're doing that. There's obviously a great need for what you are doing, and so thank you. I'm glad you are doing business in Loomis and wanting to expand your business. And you're quite an employer within the town, too. You have quite a few employees. That's obvious with the cars that are parked on the street, and you guys are doing really good work. So thank you for doing that and calling Loomis your home. Let's see here. So I think that's it for me. I...
Do you want to call motion?
No other comments or questions? At this point, we're gonna open it up for consideration of a motion in a second.
Yeah, let's go ahead, and I'd like to adopt, put a motion on the bench for adopting resolution 2502, correct? Approving the conditional use permit modification and design review per findings on Exhibit A, in Exhibit A, conditions of approval in Exhibit B, and as depicted in Exhibit C.
Aye, second.
Okay, motion in a second. Sarah, please call the roll.
Commissioner DePillo.
Aye.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner DiMartini.
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson.
Aye.
Chairman Ondurco.
Aye. Okay, congratulations and thank you. We'll all be excited to watch the progress and moving on, so appreciate it. Okay, at this time, we're gonna move on to the planning director's report. Christie, your turn.
Thank you, Chairman Ondurco. So I'll start with the Hidden Grove project. We're still in litigation, nothing to report.
Jeff, are you handling that? Is that your firm?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Are there, are there dates scheduled for hearings at this point? That you know of?
Oh, for court hearings? We filed a demur unsuccessfully, we just learned on Friday, so we will be filing an answer, I believe the deadline is March 7. In the meantime, there are conversations that are occurring at a staff level, staff to staff, staff to the local. So, you know, an unsuccessful demur is unfortunate, it's not surprising. The standard review is very high, and so all the demur, all the old ruling the demur means is that the court has to take at face value everything in the pleadings and say, if all of these facts are correct, they have at least stated a cause of action. The court isn't ruling on whether they're gonna prevail on merits, it's just saying, okay, they've at least stated the claim.
Okay.
So that's where we are.
Okay, thank you. Christie?
So next on the list, we'll be working on the municipal code update for general plan consistency. As you know, we did the update for the zoning, to the zoning ordinance in relation to the housing element. I am still working with HCD to make sure that they are fully satisfied with everything that we have done. So we're almost there, and we'll get started on the rest of the general plan after that. Bringing back last month's item regarding the inclusionary housing ordinance in Lou Fee, it was brought to my attention last week by AECOM that they made a mistake in their memo on how to apply that fee in the fee study. So we will be reviewing that again, and it will come back to you one more time, where we can discuss the fee and the inclusionary housing ordinance. SB 9, we still continue to have many lot-split applications and ADU projects coming in, and we process those in the brief timelines that we are given to complete them. But because they're ministerial, they don't come forward to you. Quick Quack Car Wash, they are moving forward with a project located across from Costco on Sierra College Boulevard. They are revising a portion of their site design, so once I have that, we can wrap up the SEQA document that's already been being worked on, and we can hopefully get that to you soon. Another project that we are working on is the Creekstone Senior Living Community for a 115-unit independent and senior assisted, assisted senior living community. That's at Boynton Road and Chisholm Trail. They are also redesigning some of their layout based on some wetlands and waterways on that property. So when they have that done, we will continue working with Helix to prepare that SEQA document so we can get that forward on your agenda. Carmen Yara Estates, which is formerly called Delmar Farms subdivision, it's for a 24-lot subdivision along both sides of Delmar Avenue, west of Bankhead Road and south of Sierra College Boulevard. So we have contracted, oh, and I have an error, we have contracted with Rainey to prepare a SEQA document for the project, which will come forward for your consideration. We're still working on a few items in relation to the irrigation system and water, water lines coming through there. So there might be a few more changes on the project, so I have not brought, put all the details forward on the revised plans that will be coming to show that. It shouldn't change much of the subdivision, it would only be a utilities kind of modification. Then we have the Harvest Oak subdivision, which is a 14-lot subdivision on two parcels at Brace Road and Stone Road. So we're working with the applicant to refine their design. It's a tricky location, because Stone Road and Brace Road meet at that point, and they have a very little window where they are at either of those roads for connection. So it's a challenge, but we're getting, we're working with them, and hopefully we'll have something soon. Then there's the Bankhead II subdivision, which is an application for a six-lot subdivision on the east side of Bankhead Road, north of Sierra College Boulevard. We're working with them to refine their design. That's a challenging site, as a lot of it is in a floodplain, and there are wetlands dotting the entire, the entire site. So we're working with them, and we'll get something forward when they have refined their design. And then we have the Reserve subdivision, which is a 20-lot, one-acre lot subdivision at Rockland and Barton Roads. So we're working with the applicant on their design moving forward. And then we also have the Pure Life Pilates project, which is an application to repurpose the structure at 6130 Horseshoe Bar Road for use as a Pilates studio. So we're working with them. There's challenges with that site with the on-ramp being so close. So we will bring that forward as their plans evolve. So a few miscellaneous odds and ends. Your Stifened has increased to $125 per month, which is great. You do so much hard work, so we want to appreciate you.
Thank you. Town Council.
We continue to have our public count hours Monday through Thursday, with offices closed to the public on Friday, so we can focus and get all of our work done. And the town website contains helpful information regarding planning and building, including application packets, frequently asked questions, and other information that can help everyone, every applicant plan their designs for submittal. And then our building inspections occur Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. So you can also see the town website for an online permitting scheduling system that was established by the building department. So bringing some streamlining to our operations. And then the next planning commission regular meeting is scheduled for March 25 at 7:00 PM. We won't be having tech support available to us at that meeting, so in-person attendance is encouraged in case we experience a few technical difficulties.
What do you mean by tech support? Is that camera?
Ten.
There's a button?
It'll just be one stationary camera.
There is a button, and we can figure that out.
All right. Well, it's not that long ago where we didn't have ten at all.
Right.
So we're grateful when we can show up. So, okay, thank you, Christie, appreciate it. We're going to move to planning commissioner reports. Start from that way to that way, if you have anything to report. It's a good time to do it.
Nothing significant. The only thing I want to talk about is the Loomis Farmers Market. So I think, I don't know if the application got in Monday, it was supposed to be put in Monday, but that's coming. We're looking at April. So it's being formalized. We're working with the, some nonprofits in the local, we looked at Placer Groan, we're looking with Chamber on making that happen. So I want to think the town of Loomis, we're hoping to shoot for Friday mornings. And we're also, Taylor's is gonna be helping us out, gives that spot, basically same spot as there before. So it's coming, and it's being finalized, so hopefully, hopefully that gets on board. But that's it for me.
Would that be every week, or it just once a month, or?
Sure. I think all that has to be kind of finalized and worked out with who's running it, the staff, the vendor. The application, if it's not in, it's gonna be in this week by the nonprofit running it. So, but we should be excited that it's coming in. I know there's been a lot of talk about it. So working with the Chamber on it, who also started some conversations around it. Looking for some local, some more local farmers too as well that want to participate. And part of the intent was to also have other nonprofits, like the Boy Scouts or Girl Scouts or FAA, be able to have booths every once in a while too. So we're excited about it. That's it for me.
I'm looking forward to the planning commission conference.
Academy.
Academy next week. And I understand our newest planning commissioner will be there as well, and Linda. And I meant to ask, do we have required classes coming up, like Ethics or Brown Act that they're offering? And how do we know if we're due to redo our trainings on those?
I believe they do have a Brown Act session and some ethics courses if you would like to take those. If you have questions about it, I just recommend taking it.
Every two years?
Yeah, the ethics requirement, the AB twelve thirty-four training is a two-year requirement. So if you haven't taken it in the last two years, you should.
And if we don't remember the date, it probably means we didn't.
Then I would defer to Christie's approach, which is go ahead and take it. We do want to make sure we document when people take these so that then we don't have this issue again two years from now.
And I am reminding myself to get my Form seven hundred in, so I'll remind any of you that haven't done that too.
Do April first.
I prefer it be March thirtieth, but...
That's all. Tim, go ahead.
Anything, Linda?
No.
Ryan? Okay, nothing here. Appreciate everyone for coming, and we're gonna adjourn this meeting. Thank you, staff, for putting it on. Good night.